I'd like to remind the council, if you will, we've had a lot of citizens to speak about not being able to hear, so when you talk, please talk directly into your mic, so that our citizens at home can hear us. We'll call a meeting to order. If you will, please stand. We'll have an invocation. I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tim Vick Auger, if he'll lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we would ask your hand on this meeting tonight. We would ask for your guidance in our endeavors. Bless this town, bless this community, and all that live within it. Our nation needs your help. Be with the people that guide and lead our nation, and the people that guide and lead our state. Give them the strength and the knowledge to do the things that are the best for this citizenry. Bless the people who are in need, the hungry, the poor, the sick. Give them this special blessing tonight. We ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Remain standing and let's pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We come now to the approval of our agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions into our agenda? I do have one gentleman. You have before you, I think, some recommendations from Chris Johnson for the street closings for some events. I would like to add that under the consent agenda for your approval and consideration. Are there any other additions or changes? Hearing none, do I have a motion that we accept agendas approved and changed?
Second.
Motion approved. Those in favor, aye. Those opposed? Okay. Our manager is going to be absent tonight, so I'll be working on the agenda myself, so I'll be working through this. I'm not quite sure, Madam Clerk, what kudos we have to our employees, but I do know that we've had some, a lot of our employees to work, and I think this is later down into our storm and cleanup. And I do personally want to commend all of our staff, Earl, Lenny, Police Department, Public Works, Fire Department, during our recent storms. I'm just very grateful to see all the work that's been done. So with that being said, I think, Mr. Earl, you do have some people you want to recognize too, so if you want to come forward and do that. But I do, I really want to say thank you on behalf of the town, the citizenry, to all you did during our storm relief. It was very important to us. Come on up, Mr. Earl, and do your part if you'd like.
Thanks, Mayor. In March of this year, just last month, we received an award from the American Public Power Association. It's called an RP-3 Award. And RP-3 stands for Reliable Public Power Provider. It's an award that's good for three years, excuse me, two years, and you have to apply for it every two years. And we started this process in 2007, and this is the third time that we won this award. The first year, it was a, it was the gold level, and this last two years, this we've received the platinum level. And this award is basically a way for utility companies to gauge how we do when compared to other utilities. It's a way to gauge how well that you're performing. Are you providing good service? And from indications, yes, that we are. We're graded in four areas: system reliability, safety, workforce development, and system improvement. And each level, each category is worth 25 points for a total of 100 points. Just briefly, the levels, the gold level is the first level, and you have to have 80% in order to get the award. The second level is a platinum level, which is 90%. You have to have a score of 90% in order to get this award. And the third level is the diamond level, and you have to have a perfect score of 100% for this level. There's a lot of documentation goes with it. You don't just submit an application, and it's rubber stamped. There's a lot of documentation goes with it, and it's very time consuming and fairly difficult award to receive. I have two guys with me, Rob and Cruz, and Luther Peaton. Rob is our newest employee, our newest lineman, been with us six, seven months, seven months. And Luther, how long you get to let him in? And these guys are here to accept the award. So we have two prior to this. We'll hang this on the wall with the other two, and hopefully we'll get that diamond award sometime. That's perfection, that's what you hope for. We don't always get it, so we present that to the electorate.
Thank you.
And before they sit down, I do want to, I want to publicly thank them for the work they did during that storm. We started out with 1,500 customers that power, and by 5:00 next morning, everyone was on but maybe 30 or 40 customers. And that was really remarkable remark, but we've got a good, we've got a good team, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Okay. You want to do the report to cleanup before I do swear anything? Oh, kudos, okay, come on up. I didn't have it written down, so I'm winging it here. I apologize.
Good. Mayor and councilman, it's my pleasure to report to you that two of the gentlemen that I have the honor of working with every day were recently recognized as our local veterans of foreign wars, Division Chief Paul Whitehurst and Division Chief Billy Langston, both back in the back. Gentlemen, stand up so everybody can look at you. And I'll read a portion of this in grateful recognition for your dedicated professionalism in maintaining, preserving, protecting the safety of the citizens of Johnston County and Smithfield. If we had a disaster today, and my family was involved, God forbid, I could think of two no more qualified and good people to handle that disaster. And I'm proud to be, to say that I work with them every day, and I appreciate y'all attending.
I tell you, during the storm, I'd be amiss if I didn't say this, during the storm, I kept in contact with the chief, and he kept me up to date, as well as others in the community. And Chief, we do publicly want to thank you as well, as well as these gentlemen. You know, we've got a fine staff, and I appreciate it, very proud of which, that we responded in a positive way. So thank you, Chief, for what you've done. We come at this time to have an oath of office for our police department, and Jeremy, Robert, I forget which one they call you. You see what kind of team you're coming to join, as I'm sure, and I'll read this oath of office, and I'd ask that you repeat after me. Raise your hand. I, Robert Jeremy Stewart.
Aye, Robert Jeremy Stewart.
The undersigned.
The undersigned.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I would be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And the constitutional powers.
And the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are, or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any manner.
In any manner.
On account of personal bias.
On account of personal bias.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And impartial.
And impartial.
To execute the duties of my office.
To execute the duties of my office.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
Abilities.
Abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay. I think we've talked about the storm cleanup, and we're probably on item four, adoption of the resolution of Johnston County Multiple Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Chief Harris, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Smithfield participates in the multi-hazard jurisdictional plan, planning process, which Johnston County heads up, and we're a portion of that. And in your packet, you will see, of course, a copy of a resolution adopting our amendments and portion of the hazard mitigation plan, as well as the addendums to that. I'll certainly answer any questions you have. We periodically update this plan every so many years, and this is just a normal process of the update. It's a pretty simple process. It just identifies hazards and looks at processes that we can put in place, either through budgetary things or just actions that would help mitigate hazards and make us better prepared, I guess, to handle emergencies.
Okay, you've heard the resolution or seen it. Do I have a motion we adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate that.
Item five, the update on the JCC circuit and the slip lining of South Smithfield. Mr. Earl, if you'd like to come forward.
The slip lining was recently done. We did approximately 1,100 feet in just under a week. The process went really, really well. I was well pleased with it, and I think that we found a couple of areas where we were getting some serious inflow. One area, when the contractor was running the camera through the pipe, actually the camera ran into daylight. And whenever you're in a pipe underground, daylight is something you don't want to see. But they indeed did that on Hood Street. And this was not the only area of infiltration, but it was one, it was a source. And as we get funds in the coming years, you know, we can do more and more of this. 1,000 feet is not the system, but it's a start. But I think we found some, I think we did good with it. As far as the JCC circuit, estimates are that we're at least 60% done, maybe a little bit more. We have all of the big wire pulled on Brogdon Road, and I think there's some terminating that needs to be done with it, but it's pretty much all in. The majority of the poles, I think, are set, but none of the overhead conductor has been pulled yet. Last week, I think it's a Friday, Thursday or Friday, I received a call from Tim Bowers of Mass Tech, and he was wanting me to release the crews, overhead crews, so they could go work storm damage and help out. And my response to him was that, sure, we would, I could release the crews, but I had to have commitment from him that whenever, after they were finished, they would come back and they would bring enough resources and personnel onboard to get this thing finished by the deadline in May. And he gave me that assurance. I talked with him today, and the crew should be back starting again Monday. And again, he said that if need be, they will work weekends to get finished. Any overtime they incur won't be attributed to us, it's a unit price contract. So that's, well, I did get that commitment from them. Any questions?
Any questions from Mr. Earl?
I just want to comment. First of all, I want to thank you for staying on this, these projects and so forth. We do have an aging infrastructure, not just here in Smithfield, but all around in North Carolina.
All around the nation.
As we discussed before. And though this is not a lot, it's a step in the right direction, and hopefully that we can continue working on this and making a large impact on what we have here. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. I agree. Thank you, Mr. Earl. We have no public hearings for discussion tonight. We're moving to citizen comments. Is there anyone here that'd like to be heard on the citizen's comments? Please come forward.
That on me, city council?
Yes, ma'am. We have your item on the agenda, though, if you want to wait for that, if that's okay. Okay, hearing no citizens' comments, do I have a motion on a consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Moving to the old business, we have an update on a vacant dwelling on Vermont Street. Paul, I think you have some information on this for us.
I'm sorry, sir.
The update on the Vermont Street house.
Yes.
Please come forward. Ms. Grimes, this is your item that you were speaking of.
The city manager made contact with the owner of the property, Kay and Barry Long, and they have awarded a contract to a firm to take the house down. There is some delay in them starting, but they have, they have a contractor, and the house will be coming down. No timeframe is set that I've heard yet, but it was supposed, the contractor was supposed to have been there last week.
One concern that I've heard from the neighbors, Paul, is that not only does the structure need to come down unsightly, but the shrubbery's growing up, you know, we're having trouble with probably snakes, mice, this kind of thing. At minimum, we need to get there and get that, some direction to get the shrubbery down, to get the cleaning up, to start with the demolition of the house. I know I've talked with Mr. Harris about this in his district, and that's a concern that he has also heard from the people in the community. I think Ms. Grimes is here to testify to that or say to that.
It is a hassle.
Yes, ma'am.
It has not entered since last June when the man that owned that boat, the mortgage company, walked off and left.
Right.
And for June of 2010. And it's a very bad hassle. Neither has anything been moved that the fire department drug out of there on the altar. And it's just a terrible hassle.
I will agree with her, because I've been by at as many of this house, and at minimum, if we could get some firm timeframes, and maybe...
I'll get, I'll work with the code enforcement officer, and we'll get out there tomorrow and inspect it, and then we'll make contact with the owner.
Mr. Harris, do you have something to add?
Just a question, Paul. What is a reasonable amount of time to us allow for the demolition of that property at this point?
Technically, right now, it's still in the mortgage company. They have not released the mortgage. They do not have clear title to it in hand yet. They have a letter from the mortgage company that it would be released, but the town attorney, I'm sure, will say, tell you that it really doesn't mean anything until they have a title to the property. So that's forthcoming, but they're working on getting it cleaned up.
So what you're saying is that legally, they cannot demolish it at this point?
No, they're going to go ahead and take it down just as soon as the contractor can get on the job, is my understanding.
You know, the town can force this to a conclusion, possibly with litigation. I understood that they had gotten a price for someone to take it down. I haven't heard from it since, and it's not something that's on my desk, so I wouldn't follow up. So, Paul, the last time, what you're saying is, on one hand, it sounds like the mortgage company hasn't consented to take it down yet. And that could go on indefinitely.
They have given a clear title to Kay and Barry Long, and Kay and Barry Long are going to take it down, but the title has not been delivered yet. But Mr. Long has indicated to us that he's going to go ahead and take it down.
I would like and advise that the councils consider, we put some definite timeframes on this, so that our neighbors, who are having to deal with this structure for more than a year, can go ahead and not have to smell this, and not have to see it, and be infested with different varmints. So it's my recommendation, we put some, the board's willing, put some timeframe in this to get something done within a period of time. How's the board feel about that?
That's the direction we need to go, whether it is, just as you said, it's been there, and just as Ms. Grimes said, it has been quite some time now. So just get some timeframes as to what can be done.
And maybe if the town were to send that letter, they can pass that along to the mortgage company in hopes that it would.
Speak them up.
Speed up the process of signing that title, but been there, done that, I understand how long these mortgage companies can take, so.
This should be our...
Put a little pressure on.
It should be our importance that it should apply to everyone in the city when things happen, that we're going to give them a 30-day, 60-day timeframe to get it done. It should be done equally all over town.
Agreed. Can you see about checking into that, Ms. Emmler, and see if we can expedite it as quick as possible?
I'll contact them first thing tomorrow morning, get a letter to them.
What is a reasonable amount of time that we should expect them to have that down?
Well, normally, on the condemnations that the town does when we take a house down, about the quickest we can get it done is 60 to 90 days.
That's a court ordered condemnation.
I understand. That's not what this is.
So far, we haven't done any of that yet. So what you could do is set a timeframe where it's voluntarily down. If it's not voluntarily down, the town will condense legal proceedings, force it to be down. Because that's the only way we're going to, that's the only way we're going to get there.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but at the last meeting, I thought, I think the planning department stated that they were going to take it down, so they've already, it's already been 30 days, at least.
That's, that's...
Nothing has changed between then and now.
Well, it's just not down, and these things can go on and on, so.
30 days would be 60 days, they had, which I would think would be...
If we take a lawsuit against them, there are certain time limits built into the lawsuit process, and it starts at the day you file the lawsuit.
I'll entertain any motion the board would like to give at this time, additional time.
I'd say, I'll make a motion that we seek that they volunteer, voluntarily remove this structure within 30 days.
Second. Motion in a second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Emmler, if you'll help us with that.
I will.
Give back the feedback to the council with the next move. We're going, he's going to address that, too, Ms. Grimes. That's part of, part of his instruction.
Yes, ma'am.
And no more than, so it means something should be happening pretty quick for you.
The cleanup can be handled directly through Mr. Emmler's office.
Right.
Right there.
That's correct.
And he's going to start that tomorrow. He is going to start, well, he is going to evaluate it tomorrow. That's not to say they'll have it cleaned up tomorrow.
Okay. Anyone have any further on this matter? Okay, thank you, Ms. Emmler. Another old business item, deer hunting ordinance amendment. Please, Chief Scott, if you'll come up and talk with us about this a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Counsel?
On page 30, I believe it is, in your agenda packet, you have a recommendation, I guess, for, some language, for an ordinance in the town to allow deer hunting in the city limits starting next deer season. At previous council meetings, we've discussed this, and it was my understanding that the council desired to allow deer hunting to be opened up onto private property with the landowner's consent, and to let them kind of deal with the issues themselves on their own property. On page 30, and again, this language is not the legalese that you'll see in the end, but it should give you an idea of where we want to go, and that's what my question is to you tonight, is where do we want to go, as we want to keep this in front of you and have it done in a timely manner. If you read through the first two paragraphs, that would allow us only hunting from an eight-foot deer stand. If the council desires to allow hunting other than from an eight-foot deer stand, meaning at ground level, then you eliminate the second paragraph and go to number one and two below. So my question is for the council tonight, hopefully, which would you rather see us go forward with, so that we can get the ordinance drafted and back in front of you?
Do we have a recommendation from you, Chief, from your preference, or...
You know, I do not have a recommendation. I am not a bow hunter. I feel that it could be done safely either way, and I think it can always be amended in the future if we had a problem. So at this time, I do not...
Mr. Harris?
Mr. Mayor, originally, there had been some conversation about 100 feet from a building in an elevated stand, but in consideration of some of the older citizens who do hunt, that often can lead to health problems and climbing a tree, and there is a pretty good chance that some of the older citizens might have a desire to be on the ground in a ground blind, or something along those lines. So that was the reason that in some discussion, I feel like that that bottom section, which includes the ability to hone the ground, that increasing the distance would not discriminate against the older citizens who might care to bow hunt. The other thing I want to mention is, bow hunting in North Carolina certainly includes a bow, but it also includes a crossbow.
Yes.
So I want to make sure everybody's clear on the fact that bow hunting, if the council decides to do this, then it will be whatever is legal during the bow season, which will be a bow and arrow of any type, or a crossbow.
But based on your experience, Mr. Harris, in the hunting, more probably than most of us on this board, is there a recommendation of the chief's request of which way we should go with the, with the distance?
If you're hunting from an elevated stand with a bow or a crossbow, you're shooting down. So 100 feet is not an issue. If you're hunting on a, on the ground and you're shooting a bow or a crossbow, I'm not so sure that the 200 foot is, perhaps we should increase that to 300 feet. 300 feet is 100 yards. If you shoot a bow from the ground or a crossbow, it would be very hard for that to travel 100 yards. Could it be done? You know, if you held the bow up, perhaps, but I would suggest that, I would suggest we do this, but I would suggest we increase the distance on the ground to 300 feet.
And make sure we're not voting on this tonight. We're just voting on a recommendation.
Correct.
Because I have some serious concerns with not shooting from an elevated stand, okay? Especially, not just my kids, but my neighbors everywhere. I know that distance-wise where I live, I've got structures within 200 feet, but I think we need to give it some serious, serious consideration, and I value Mr. Harris's opinion. But I just think, you know, if we go this route, I'd just like to have a little more. Now, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm just, I'm a little uneasy about it at this time.
There was no plan to, to my knowledge, to actually pass this tonight. It was just another step, and in fact, I'd had the conversation with the mayor right before the meeting about perhaps postponing this discussion, but I felt like we'd go ahead and do it, but just wanted to, and I think Chief wanted to update on, you know, the progression we had made.
And I would definitely be in favor of at least, like, your recommendation of at least 300. At least puts me a little more at ease.
And, yeah, we do need to talk about it. Chief, does that answer your request?
Well, I would like to know, I guess, for my benefit, how you would like us to proceed. Do you want this to go to Attorney Spence, so that he can draft the actual language, and you want to draft it both ways then, so we can bring it back to you? Or how would you like us to proceed from this point?
Here's what I'd like for you to do. I'd like for you to find one of your officers to see if they might have a crossbow, and I would like for you to test a crossbow on the ground to see how far it will go.
All right. We can do that.
And I think that will be a pretty simple test you could do, maybe shoot a few arrows, three or, three or four arrows, and just see how far you can make it go. And it may be that 300 feet's a good number. It may be that it needs to be more, but I think in the, on the side of safety, we certainly need to make sure what we're going to do is safe. And if we deem that it's not safe to be on the ground, then we need to address that.
I think that's an excellent, excellent...
I think that's an excellent, excellent
Do you want him to test?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, both, right.
We'll keep working at this as we get it right.
In fact
We've got some time to do it, and that's important.
A bow and a crossbow, I mean, yeah, both, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief, might as well stay, stay there, we got, going into a new business now. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, request to apply for Office of Community Oriented Policing, or COPS grant, Mr. Gentry, if you enlighten us on that, please.
Sure. The police department is requesting permission to apply for a grant through the Office of Community Oriented Policing, or COPS, it's part of a hiring program, this is actually stimulus money from the federal government to put people back to work, it's actually a pretty good deal for the town. It is a competitive grant, so we're not guaranteed it will get anybody, but under the guidelines, we can ask for up to two, we might get one, we might get none. But the grant provides one-hundred percent funding for entry-level salary and benefits for three years, there is no match, the only obligation is if the position has a salary that winds up being higher than starting pay, we are responsible for making up the difference. Like I said, it's for three years, the only requirements are the officers have to be involved in community policing in some fashion, and after the grant is over, after three years, we have to keep them on for additional twelve months, or one calendar year.
Any questions for Mr. Gentry? Do you have any questions, do I have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion, we approve your request.
Second. Motion and a second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much, sounds like a great opportunity. Mr. Merrick, come talk to us about the resolution on establishment and the maintenance of the Electorate Capital Reserve Fund and the Water Sewer Utility Capital Reserve Fund.
Lady Mayor and Councilman. As Councilman Moore stated before, our, and not only our, infrastructure is aging, and with that comes the need to replace things over the years, and what this will do, it is a, more or less a vehicle to take the depreciation amounts that we have already been funding within our budgets, and instead of taking those amounts and returning them back to the water sewer fund or electric fund balance, they will be moved out into a, a separate fund, that is, this capital reserve fund that we could create, and what that will do is restrict the use of these funds to only fund certain infrastructure or capital items that to help improve those systems, and it will be totally at the board's discretion if they want to fund the depreciation level or some other level as we go through the years, just based on whatever financial, you know, agendas or crisis we might be faced with, and that's the way it's written now. Now, the, the adoption of this resolution will only create this fund, it will not transfer money into that fund this year, we can do that this year, or we can wait and go and discuss that during the budget process. The depreciation amounts pretty much stay the same, so it kind of sets a maximum there, but we can either go below that at whatever level the council will be comfortable with. This resolution, I tried to create it where it left the most amount of freedom with the council as we go from year to year, and we have changes, changing fiscal scenarios we might want to discuss there, but that's essentially what that does, no money can be spent directly from these funds, you have to transfer the money back into the respective utility fund before it can be spent, and you must designate what it will be spent on. So it, it just allows for a lot more control over those funds to reinvest back in your infrastructure.
Gentlemen, if you remember, this was discussed in last year's budget as a recommendation that myself and Justin brought to the board about having some designated funds for infrastructure that Mr. Moore has just alluded to, and I think this does put us in a position to start making improvements in years to come without keep dipping into our general fund, and it would be my encouragement that we set these reserve funds aside to do that. But is there any questions for Mr. Merrick? Do I have a motion that we do this establishment of these funds?
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Justin. Update on possible redistricting in relationship to the 2010 census, Ms. Demmler, if you'll come forward and talk to us about that.
As of this afternoon, Mr. Williams was gonna make the presentation, and that I have some information on it, we are not the only community that's confused as to what we actually need to do, and the School of Government in Chapel Hill has so graciously, on the twentieth this month, is holding a one-day session to inform everybody what they need to do, so we plan to be in attendance at that meeting so that we have a thorough understanding of what needs to be done.
I think we need to reserve until we get all the facts.
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay. Is that, is that agreeable with the board, or no motion needed on this one? Thank you very much, Ms. Demmler. I'll be very brief on the mayor's reports, many of you know that we've talked about the merger between Duke and Progress Energy, we have joined about seven of us cities, working together to make sure that all the possibilities are uncovered and looked at in this merger on our behalf and for our citizens' behalf, so that we can keep our competition in years to come, plus even our current rates, at a rate that we can be inviting as a community. We had a conference call this afternoon, Electric Cities originally did not go with us in our proposal of the five communities, but now have joined forces with us, and thinking that all of us looking outside the box will help with this merger to see what's in the best interest of our community. So that was encouraging today, we did set aside some monies for that opportunity, and it's my understanding, it's not confirmed today, but yet discussed, that Electric Cities may pick up that tab, because they feel the need that our, our folks are doing, doing the right thing, so I will keep you up to date on that, and it is all very positive right now, in our behalf on this merger. I don't think I need to say a whole lot about the farmers market, Tim, you may want to, but it's been a great success, we've had people there, I've heard nothing but wonderful ideas of how wonderful it is, and just won't see how much bigger it can get, but we have people coming on a weekly basis, they're making it a event every week, and Tim, the staff has done a wonderful job, and I appreciate all they've done, but any of the council that has not been there, anybody here that hasn't been there, you need to go and look at it, it's a wonderful thing. Before you, at your places, gentlemen, you see a Town Smithfield Appearance Commission report, this is a report that has been given to us, it also includes the J.B. George funds, if I'm right, Madam Clerk, that, so we can see at our review, if you remember, this is required annually, and this is something that is for your review. I do want to say, on behalf of the Smithfield Appearance Commission, and Mr. Harris is a board member that's serving on that board, they're doing great things, and I'm very proud of them. We recently took, what is it, Mr. Harris, what, thirty or thirty-five crepe myrtles that's been planted so far on the Adopt a Tree program?
About thirty.
And we've, there's some in our new cemetery, if you hadn't seen that, go by and look at those, they're scattered all around town, Mr. Branch and his staff has done a wonderful job assisting with that, Lenny, I applaud you for that, done a great job there, and it seems good to see those beautification efforts in the community. So if you hadn't seen that, go right around and look at it. Is the application for these trees still open? It is, and it's still online, am I, am I right? And if you don't find one online, and staff or can help you with that personally, if you can't get on the computer and do that, so yes, that's right, glad to have that. The city manager's report, I'm gonna try to wing that right quick, there is a comprehensive transportation plan thing that was going on today over at the AG Center, I did not get a chance to go to that, I was occupied with, with some digging, some dirt out at the new charter school, but I understand there will be another one set aside so that we can look at the comprehensive transportation plan for our area. Town Hall Day is tomorrow, I will be attending that and a dinner tomorrow night at the Clayton Center, is that right? At six-thirty, so if you, any of you want to go, we may have an opening, if you want to go, let me know. We wouldn't be amiss, or we would be amiss if we didn't talk about the Ham and Yam Festival coming up this weekend, Chris, you want to share anything about that, or?
Ready for May ninth.
They've worked hard, and, and I can see that they're ready for this event to start up, so if you're around the weekend, go ahead.
Patrick and the league chief and a group of individuals met today to talk about the security, we'll talk, we'll make sure they're there at that time soon, so I'm very comfortable about what the town's standing, where we are in the organization, so it looks like it's good weather, so we're happy about that.
That's great, it's gonna be a little bit cooler.
Thank the league chief and the board.
Thank you, guys, that's, that's what it means, work as a team, and we appreciate that, all of you. We did see some great reports from our police department, our 2010 crime reports were down significantly, I think, you could say that to be a significant number, what was it, averaged eighteen percent, which is a very good thing, and we appreciate the diligence of our staff and our, and I think too, we need to, for those who are seeing this by television, that, to thank our citizens for getting involved, making the call when they see something that's unusual, and, and getting involved in our community, and that's what it's all about, so we want to applaud them as well, in making a difference in our crime here in Smithfield. There is an update on page forty-five of our Smithfield Crossing Project time schedule, I'm hoping, gentlemen, we'll be able to move dirt pretty quickly out there once bids come in, and this is a project this, this board has taken as the number-one project, and, you know, to get commerce in our area is still, still very important, and so I applaud you in your support in that. Is there anything else that the board needs to discuss or bring up?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make one comment, just sitting here listening to all this tonight, the Appearance Commission, how active they are, our movement forward with our transportation plan around the outlet center to improve that, and our fire EMS, all, all our town employees, the work that was done, I was actually out of town at the beach when the tornado struck, and I think I was in the area where the last ones were headed, so I'd heard about the damage around here, and I was, I was really, really concerned about what I'd find when I got back, but when I got back, everything was already cleaned up, and I think it is just, it is just a perfect example of the employees that we have here with the Town of Smithfield, in every department, so, you know, I don't want to single any out, because I know that everybody played a part in this role, including the mayor yourself, but Chief Scott also, I'd like, but I would like to commend your department, as, on a separate note, the news about the crime activity here going down is excellent, and I really think that it is a direct correlation with our efforts on community policing, and I, I really do appreciate you staying involved with that, and hopefully we can continue on with it. There, there are a lot of great things going on in Smithfield, a lot, and Ham and Yam this weekend, Chris, I won't be able to make it, I wish I could, but, so, no, that's just, just another example, and I'd just like to thank the, the employees.
Well, thank you, Councilman Moore.
Patterance Sills on the back, I will say, and this council, and the mayor, under your leadership, I think we have done, we're turning, we're turning the curve, I think.
Well, I was in a meeting, and just not to belabor this meeting, but I, I was in a meeting last week, and, and I talked about all the great things that are happening in Smithfield, and I kept right on, and I kept right on, and a guy sitting beside me, just like I'm doing now, I guess, but the guy sat beside me and said, are you ever gonna quit? I said, I don't, I couldn't, because there's that much going on, and it's all moving forward to a greater community, a greater lifestyle here in Smithfield, and it begins with each one of us believing that. If we go out there and make a difference, it, it does make a difference, and I applaud this council for that, I applaud them for what they stand for, and, and the staff, we've talked about it, but I do thank you from the bottom of my heart, and it's, it's humbling to be a part of it, it really is. Does anybody else have anything else?
I do, Mr. Mayor, I've heard numerous complaints in the, in the city about our sound system here in the town council room, and I know that on several occasions, I've tried to watch our meetings, and I virtually cannot hear what goes on, and I think it's time that we give our citizens opportunity to hear what we say, and I don't know whose charge that is, but I would like the council to consider an evaluation or talking with someone about what we can do to improve these microphones.
Mr. Merrick, I think that'll fall under your jurisdiction with Jay's assistance, who's our IT specialist, so we'd ask that you take care of that for us. Anything else? Do I have a motion adjourned?
So move.
Second. Those, those in favor, say aye. Adjourned. Thank you.